Meeting to falling to order, this is a meeting of the DuPage County zoning board of appeals. We're here this evening, August 21st, 2025. And Mr. Ross, would you call the role?
Strawn?
Here.
Phelps?
Here.
Here. Dennis Moran. Use your car phone. You're Dan, sorry. Here.
And let the record reflect that we are one person short on our board. And Mr. Gerard is not in attendance, though he may join us by Zoom. There is no public comment to be offered. There's no minutes to be approved. That takes us to our public hearing for case Z 25052, the PTS cannabis case that has a request for variation to allow an adult use cannabis dispensing organization within 1,500 feet from a preexisting public or private nursery school, preschool, primary or secondary school. The property is approximately nine tenths of an acre. The matter was published in the Daily Air, Daily Herald on August 6th, 2025. As is the custom, we have circulated the petition to neighboring authorities in various departments of the township. We have received no comments from any such authority with the exception of the village of Addison, which has filed a letter in protest. I'll recognize Mr. Luke Hans. And if you have other witnesses, let's have everybody sworn in at the same time.
I don't know if anybody else will testify, but they'll hear for questions. So why don't you stand up?
Do raise your right hands, please. Is this another one of yours, sir?
Yeah.
Do raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give at this cost in our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
I do. Okay, we have a packet of exhibits that's been distributed in advance. Will you go through them? Survey site plan are one and two. There's a tax bill presumably intended to prove ownership, which is exhibit three. Exhibit four is an aerial. Exhibit five is group exhibit five is some photographs of the site. And then there's a narrative which is marked as exhibit six. Those are admitted.
Let me thank you. As you have all the exhibits and I'll try and move through it quickly. The applicant is Lake 53, which LLC, which is the owner of the strip mall at the northwest corner of can't see all of the strip mall, but the northwest corner of Lake Street, state route 50 or 20 and state route 53, which I guess is still called Old Rolling Road, at least in my world. Project is proposed to be located in a B2 business district with an existing retail strip center. The strip center has, as we'll talk about multiple uses on it, it's kind of anchored on the south end by a restaurant, DeMarco's Restaurant, Italian Restaurant, unincorporated Itasca. And we're requesting a variation, as the chairman said, allowing for the permitted use of an adult use Canada or cannabis dispensing organization within 1,500 feet from two preexisting preschools and a nursery. The neighborhood, let me get to the other side. I'm not getting anybody's way. But the neighborhood is, for those of you who know it, it's a very industrial, it's a very commercial area. You have here the strip mall that we're talking about on this northeast, northwest corner, excuse me, is an old gas station. And then I think there's still a U-Haul dealership and a to the east, the west of that. And to the north is a billboard. The southeast corner is a gas station. I think that's a Buc-E's or it's a larger gas station. I can't remember. And south of that, you have, south and east of that, you have hotels and other strip malls, other strip centers. To the southwest corner, you have, I think that's a Verizon dealership. You have a strip mall and then a Walmart and very like a larger industrial. The two areas that have preschools, and I didn't really do a really good job blowing this up, so I apologize, are the two in black in the corner here. That's a R A W D A H, if I remember correctly, yes. It's Islamic homeschool co-op, according to its website, preschool. The other, and that is approximately 1,400 and some feet away. And then the other one, which is about 1,177 feet from prop, and this is property line to property line. So I think that's important in this case because they're both on relatively large piece of parcel of property. And the other one is the Edison Park District facility, which runs a nursery and a preschool. Now that property is almost 40 acres. So that's one of the problems, why it's so close. It's not really the use. It's, it's, it's a property owned. This preschool is on a 40 acre parcel. So it's, it's over 1,500 feet from property line to the building and even more so from use to use. We have, and as you know, as you can see, both schools are located on Route 53. This is obviously a major intersection. And to the left, to the south, to the, excuse me, to the west, you also have 355. So this is a very heavily trafficked area. It's not, it is residential to the north of the property, north and northeast. To the east of the property, again, is all fairly much commercial, at least on Lake Street. So it's a very commercial, very developed area. The, while the route, I'm going to say R A W is not quite 1,500 feet from the property. It is over 1,500 feet from the actual proposed use. These are not really in the same neighborhood. I think most of us who know that area would say there's kind of a split at Lake Street that goes north versus south as far as the neighborhood. The preschools are not really in kind of the same neighborhood, actually, is what we're looking to do with the cannabis situation. It's a cannabis dispensary. As you can see, these two properties, and I'll start with the Addison Park District property, is separated from ours by Lake Street, which is four or five lanes there. You have the school, you have the late major gas station, you have a large detention center. And then this band coming through here, which is just north of both properties, is common at high power lines, high tension lines. So it's not this park district use and the Lake Street use or the proposed project are not really in the same, they're not really affecting each other. I know we have a 1,500 foot distance that's in the ordinance, but in this situation, both properties are heavily separated by other commercial uses from the use at stake. Also, because they're preschools, it's not like some kids coming out and walking down the street and going to end up kind of bothered by the cannabis or say, oh my gosh, you know, cannabis is such a big thing that I want to be smoking pot tomorrow. It's not like they're teenagers coming through here. And honestly, you can't come into these facilities unless you're of age. I couldn't, I couldn't bring my five-year-old son, not that I'm young enough to have a five-year-old son, into this, into this with you. And there is a security guard at all times in the facility. The facility, we open nine to nine, Monday through Saturday, nine to six on Sunday. The let me kind of talk about the Lake 53 is the owner. Proposed tenant is, I'm going to spell this for you, Kechwa, K E C H W A L L C, which has retained PTS Corporation as its management company to run the dispensary. PTS is a vertically integrated cannabis company. It has dispensary, it has distribution, it has cultivation, and it's operating in four states, Iowa, or excuse me, Illinois, Arizona, Michigan, and Ohio. And they have a total of 14 dispensaries in those four states. Six of them, I believe, are already in Illinois.
Is it a privately held corporation?
Yes.
And with a limited number of shareholders?
Yes.
Don't we need to know who the shareholders are?
I never have had to do that before.
Well, but if you publish, if you publish this as the owner or operator rather than this sub, you would have had to disclose that. You have to disclose.
I have to disclose the owner.
Yeah.
Which we did, which is Lake 53.
And the petitioner. Okay, well.
The petitioner is the owner in this case because they're asking for the zoning relief. The zoning relief runs with the land.
Right.
And, and that would be at least two family members from there.
Object to telling us who the shareholders are?
Of PTS or of?
Of all of these entities.
I, I don't believe so. I mean, maybe.
Well, let us know. Well, we don't have to go through the list right now, but as you may not know, but at some point, let us know.
Yeah, I know that the LLC, the Lakes 53 LLC is mostly run, is owned by the Greco family. There may be other people, but it's mostly owned by the Greco family.
Yeah, the managing partner.
The managing partner is Greco's, who are, two of them are here today.
Okay.
If you wish, I, I have no problem. I don't think providing a list of major shareholders, I've just never had to do one.
One thing, we have to make certain that we don't have any conflicts or recusal requirements.
Honestly, I guess I've just never had to do that. And if this is, that's a concern, we'll obviously give you a list. We'll have a list by the recommendation meeting.
I, I would like to know for my own, particularly because of the recusal requirements.
I, I, I kind of understand where you're at and we'll get those, we'll get those for you. The subject property has multiple users. As I said, it's anchored by DeMarco's on the south end and DeMarco's has a gaming, has a gaming license. The subject proper, he has a further mix of other users. And if you kind of look at exhibit five, you'll see group exhibit five or photographs of the strip mall and shows you some of the users. I'll go through a couple of them. You have dry cleaners, you have massage spa, you have hookah sales, takeout restaurants, coffee shop, and a tattoo parlor currently existing, other takeout. There may be some I'm missing, but that's kind of the main users. Proposed variation meets the standards of the DuPage County zoning ordinance as set forth below. It's in the narrative, but we'll kind of go through it quickly. Are there practical difficulties or particular hardships in way of carrying out the strict letter of the regulations? In this case, we think this is a special circumstance clearly exists here. As I said earlier, subject property is not in the same neighborhood as the preschools, separated by many non-residential uses, including some open space with large detention areas, a gas station, hotels. And the strip mall is already a mix of uses that have much greater effect on the area than would a dispensary. Moreover, suitable properties in the BLS 5 region. I know that doesn't make a lot of sense to most of us, but that's when they grant these licenses, they're by region. And this license has been allocated to that region. There's not a lot of locations in this particular region that can have these. And the license that was granted is for social equity issues, probably not your problem or major concern, but it is to help further the variant, the variance helps further the goals and the initiatives of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the chapter? Not injurious to the neighborhood detrimental to public welfare or in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan? Proposed use is a permitted use under B2. So it's presumed to be in accordance from a compatibility standards with the neighboring uses. Further, the county has decided that these types of uses are not detrimental to the public welfare in this neighborhood. As we said, it's 1,500, it's heavily commercial area and property line to property line is not 1,500 feet, but use or building to building is 1,500 feet. As I said before, preschoolers are not able to walk. First of all, they're not walking in this age to far distances, but this is not an area that's connected by much in the way of sidewalks. It's not a walking area that you would traverse. In fact, in all the years I was in Itasca, I can promise I never walked down that street. Strict age, there's strict age gating and ID verification for anyone walking in. Sure as that no miners will have access to the store or its products. And as I said, we will have 24, not 24/7, but entire, whenever the operations are open, there will be security guards there by statute. The third is will not impermanent, supply light, narrow to adjacent premises. We're not having any change to the building. It doesn't really, that standard doesn't really apply here. Well, that fourth is will not diminish the value of land and building in the vicinity of the posed conditional use. Post development is already on a major, two major arterial roadways, which are both four and five lanes in this area. And it's the type of use that is not, that is not going to, that is going to fit in with the current uses in the strip center and area. And as shown by this zoning ordinance includes cannabis dispensaries to be permitted uses, as I said before. Due to enhanced security features, the value of security for the subject property, all of the subject property and the immediate vicinity will actually create a safer environment because there will be security at all times in this area to make sure. So if something was to occur at this, we would have security nearby to help with any incident or anything that may occur. Accordingly, there will be no diminution of value of land to the surrounding properties. Will not unduly increase traffic congestion to the public streets and highways. This is not going to create additional traffic compared to any other use that is allowed in B2, takeout restaurants, et cetera. This is not the kind of use that is more intense from a personnel standpoint or customer standpoint than those already existing uses or available uses. When you have dry cleaners, takeouts, coffee shops, those are just uses that are occurring on a regular basis. Number six does not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent property. Obviously no more impervious surface, so we're not adding any further stormwater risks. Will not, seven, will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue or relief. There will not be any additional burden due to that in this particular area. Everything is already in compliance with the codes. Eight, the final, will not otherwise impute, impair the public, I should probably put my glasses on, sorry. Will not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or general welfare of the inhabitants. Cannabis sales in Illinois and DuPage County are already highly regulated, and that's the safeguard against any negative effect upon the general public. The county board has pretty much said this is not a negative effect, except, you know, they have the one exclusion for 1,500 feet, which we've discussed. State mandated required security measures, including surveillance, will ensure the public health, safety, welfare of the general public. It will comply with all state and local regulations. And these regulations and security measures, along with other reasonable steps that can be taken, will be carried out to ensure that the use in the subject property will not impair or interfere, impair or interfere with the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare of people within DuPage County. I know we do have the one objection from Addison. It's kind of a general objection in my mind, which is, you know, it's not in compliance because we need the variation and it wouldn't meet the village codes. Well, that's nice, but DuPage County has its own codes and they, Addison has a requirement of 250 feet from a residential dis, from residential district. That is not obviously in the code in front of you today. So in sum, the project meets the standards for a variation, including the special circumstances on the ordinance. And Lake 53 LLC should be granted the requested variation from the required 1,500 foot distance requirement from a preexisting public or private nursery school, preschool, primary or secondary school. And if you have any questions, I'm, we're happy to answer them.
On, on your site plan, you show which unit is proposed to be occupied by this facility. What, what is in that? What occupies that unit now?
They're currently vacant units. What are they? Literally vacant units.
Vacant? What was their last? So coffee shop or something?
Yeah.
Why don't you identify yourself, your name for the record? So she.
Sorry, my name is A.J. Jaffrey. I'm the property manager for Lake.
What was the last name?
Jaffrey, J A F F E.
Thank you.
So currently it'd be unit eight through 11. So there's a dog cleaners in 10 and 11. Unit nine was always vacant since I've been around. And then eight used to be like the cappuccino pop.
Okay. Thanks. Let's, you know, I'm intrigued with this notion that the interpretation of the ordinance seems to be a 1,500 foot difference from the closest point of the parcel to the closest point of the other parcel. And while this shopping center seems to be, well, A, it's not enormous center. It is somewhat integrated. On the contrary, the Addison facility is a massive facility and to my knowledge is not that integrated. So if I, can I ask you, is that little green spot there in the Addison facility, is that the, the school?
The, the school is actually way down here.
Oh, school's down there?
School is at the southern border, so it's even further away.
How far from the school is it to the closest point of the parcel that the shop?
It's about 1,600 feet.
1,600 feet from the school?
Yeah, 1,600, 1,700 feet.
And is that a greater distance or a lesser distance to the other school?
The other school is about from the park is about 1,500, 150, I would say. Maybe a little more. It's about, they're both about 1,500, 1,600.
Yeah, that's interesting to me.
Actually 1,600, 1700, because you look at it from the angle directly.
But I'm not asking sort of unit to unit.
No, I'm talking.
Asking the school unit to the closest point of the parcel.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's from, just for, for reference, I think it's 1133 or 11, it's about 1150 from here, which is the southern part of the parcel to the northern part of Centennial Park. And it's 1430 or something to this corner of the R A W facility at the northeast corner of that facility.
Okay, well, this is a variation, so I'm, I, I don't have any questions about hours of operations and all of those things that would be appropriate for conditional use. And I want to just say for the record, you know, I'm an old codger and I have my own views of cannabis facilities. My views don't count, and I'm not going to say what they are, by the way. But my views don't count because the, you have pointed out, the ordinance is the ordinance. This is a permitted use within this B2 district. And I think our decision has to be made on that basis. So this to me is a real crisp question as to whether some relief should be granted because of the peculiarities of the size of these two respective parcels. Does anyone have any questions about this case?
I do advise before, if it was a conditional use, will, will there be a lounge or they could bulk or is it just sales?
To be clear, this is just retail.
And for the record, this is Mitchell Kay, just so.
Can you spell your last name?
Kay Y.
Thank you.
Strictly retail sales, no consumption whatsoever, no consumption outside of the building or inside of the building. People buy their products, put in a brown bag that is branded, it's not just like a cordyceps bag and stapled shut. They go in their car and they go on their way. They're not taking it out and they're not allowed to.
It's actually a way to consume.
Thank you very much. There's two members of the audience here. Do either of you have any comments or questions? If so, you have to be sworn in. So both of you. Well, are you going to comment because you have to be sworn in?
All right.
All right.
You solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give at this cost in our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God. Thank you.
Please state your name and spell your last name and then tell us your address and where that is in relation to the, any of these parcels.
Sure. I'm Consuelo Arguilas, C O N S U E L L, S A R G U I L L E S. And I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development for the Village of Addison. Address?
One.
One Friendship Drive, Addison.
Thank you.
If I may, thank you, Chairman Carthel and zoning board of appeals. I'm here to represent the view of the Village of Addison, here to represent the Village of Addison's mayor, Hungley, and Village of, Village of Ford. Like I said, I'm Consuelo Arguilas, and I'm here to object to the zoning. That's before you, as iteration.
Could you either speak a little louder or step a little closer?
Sure, sure, I don't mind. I could go up there if you'd like, whatever you'd like.
Speak from there.
I'm Consuelo, I'm here to represent the Village of Addison. And I'm here to object to the request. The reasons are stated in the petition that we responded to. And primarily, the reasons we object is because the proposed use is not compatible with immediate areas. As you can see by the map here, we focus on the southern part of Lake Street. However, I would like to point out to the board, the areas to the north of the subject property and to the east of the subject property. There are a lot of residential homes that are unincorporated DuPage property and further east that have fallen within the Village of Addison. Those are residential homes that are closest to this parcel. We do not feel that the request meets the minimum distance requirements per the variations that are being seen. It does abut residential homes located to the north and east of the subject property. Further, general retail and restaurant properties are located in the Village of Addison to the southwest, south and east of the subject property along Lake Street. The proposal would not meet the Village of Addison's zoning ordinance, which requires a minimum of 250 feet from a residential structure, nor would it meet the DuPage County's minimum distance requirement from any existing public or private nursery school, preschool, primary, secondary school, which is what the variation that's being seen here tonight. Some additional information, Addison does not allow cannabis dispensaries in business districts. An industrial manufacturing district is best for the proposed use and which is what in the Village of Addison code would be allowed. We do recommend the petitioner seeks alternative sites. This property is in unincorporated DuPage, but most of the public thinks that's the Village of Addison, that intersection. Village of Addison does abut it directly to the southwest and to the south of it, with exception, with exception of some pockets of unincorporated. Thank you for your time and we respectfully request that you deny this request.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you, did you pass a formal resolution so that this is a formal objection or is this an advisory objection?
We did not pass a formal resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does that engender any questions from any member of the board? In that event, Mr. Luke Hans, you want to respond or give a summary statement?
I think I kind of already said my response to that is this is in DuPage and dealing with the DuPage County zoning ordinance is not residential or not Addison's. And the fact that DuPage has decided that even though you're next to residential is not a, does not ban or bar you from having a cannabis facility. That is a decision made by our legislative, legislative body in this case, the county board that we're all living with. We all may have, as Mr. Carthel does, I'm not sure, you know, all of our opinions are pro-cannabis, but it's the business that the, this county board decided. And I think we've shown this special circumstances for the variation. So thank you for your time.
Can I, so you presented a tax bill, which you did not testify about as part of your exhibit package. May I ask for your consideration that you withdraw it because I presume it was presented in order to prove ownership, but ownership is, and therefore your authority to proceed with this case. That is already resolved. And because there are tax numbers and taxes on here, I don't want, I want the decision to be made exclusively on the record of this case. Tax, tax payments arguably cloud that record.
Yeah.
Do you understand my point?
I, I do. And honestly, we were, we're required on, we were requested under the letter we received to provide proof of ownership.
Right.
That's why we did it. But I, as long as everybody admits that we own, that Lake 53 LLC owns the property and no one's seen.
I think this could be, you know.
I could pull that.
Part of file, not the record. That's my point. I, I think this could be part of the file to demonstrate ownership, but not part of the record of this hearing.
We will, we will withdraw it to the three.
Thank you very much. All right, well, that concludes the matter. I think it's a fairly clean record, so we don't need additional information. We can consider this case on September 3rd at our recommendation meeting. We have a couple of cases that night. That recommendation meeting will commence at 5:30 and be held in this room. So we'll see you then.
Oh, sorry. It's September 4.
Thursday?
Thursday, yes.
I thought, okay, well, I screwed up on the calendar. September 4 is the date for the recommendation meeting. As you know, Mr. Lupkans, there's no further testimony. Yeah, and just in the meantime, we will submit the list you want, so people are aware of any possible conflict. Great. Thank you very much. We'll close the hearing.